Good morning, everyone. It's been one of those mornings and my computer was not wanting to work, but it looks like it's working now. So I think we can get started. I will call the meeting to order at 9:03 a.m.
This conference will now be recorded.
And we will start with a round of introductions. I'm Nancy Wise, Benton County Commissioner and Chair of the Commissioners.
I'm Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Good morning, Kate Portia, Corvallis Benton County Development Office.
Trum McGuire, Board of Commissioners.
Joahan, Equity Diversity Inclusion Coordinator, Keep A Pronoun.
Hi, April Holland, Public Health.
All right, that takes us to announcements. Are there any announcements? Seeing none, that takes us to review and approve the agenda. I do have one addition to the agenda, which we will add under other, which is to ratify the letter of appreciation to an anonymous donor via the Benton Community Foundation for the Oak Creek Route. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I will consider that approved and we will move into the work session. First up, we have the second quarter update from Economic Development Office, RAIN and SBDC. Kate Portia, hi Kate.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioner. So nice to see you all. I will make this brief because I know you've got a pretty chock full agenda today on this very special Tuesday. My friend and colleague Kirk Wright emailed and said, oh, it's a Tuesday. You guys are probably all privy to this. It took me like two hours, oh, pun intended, to figure, to figure out that it's such a special 22, 22 days. So anyway, happy Tuesday to everyone out there. I wanted to go through this with you. I think what I could do, and thanks to staff for updating the agenda with, with the reports that I sent on. I think I'd like to direct you to what would be page four of 45 in your e-packet. This is the colorful Excel spreadsheet grid. I'm a visual person and this sort of is an outline of the discrete projects that we're working on for you guys and just gives you kind of a feel for what we've been working on, at what time of year, and sort of what we're, what we're focusing on now. And while you're looking that, I'd like to just highlight a couple of items for you. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions for you this morning. So a couple of items. On item 1A3 Downtown Focus, as you know, this is a part of our work plan. And I did want to update you. You may have seen the news, the DCA had decided not to pursue their Economic Improvement District, which was one of the funding sources that they used, and then has decided to disband. They are having some conversations with some other groups at this point in time, and we're watching that really closely. We, I think all feel like downtown is a, is a key focus for our community and want to see sort of how this is going to shake down, how we can support if it's going to be another organization that takes on this work. So just want to let you know that we're, we're watching that really closely and really support our, our downtown folks and businesses and want to make sure they, they remain strong here in the coming years. The next item, 1A4, the COVID programs that we stood up on the brow or business right of way. This is the program that allows our restaurants and businesses to use the public right of way. Jerry has sent out an update. We are continuing that program on a temporary basis, so it'll be ongoing through this summer. And I think, as I let you know, there is an interest on the part of restaurateurs and, and patrons alike to continue this and make this program permanent. However, we're working to sync that up with the city's parking audit and work that's coming along. And so in the meantime, we basically have stood this up to continue on temporarily for another season with the hopes of bringing that back with the consideration as to whether council may want to, to make that a permanent part of our downtown community. Let's see, I'd like to skip down a bit to, funny, and it's not in that colorful list, but Urban Renewal Tools. Just to let you know, we've got a couple of upcoming meetings for our South Corvallis Urban Renewal District. It's just been getting going. And again, we want to extend our thanks to you, Commissioner Ojero, for being a part of that group. The city, not just through Urban Renewal, but you know, there's a, a couple of different affordable housing projects that are coming down the pike and the city is looking to add about 200 units of affordable housing. So some really exciting stuff to come in, in the next couple, three months, I believe. On the airport, this is another biggie. You can see it's, it's got a lot of blue, this one. 3.a.1, the annexation of the Airport Industrial Park, a lot of blue because this is a, a big lift, as I think you guys know. We were able to complete the transfer of the lease process that used to be housed in Public Works. And our team has now taken that over. So leases on the Airport Industrial Park side, we now are completely handling through our office, which we think makes sense and streamlines what the experience is like then for applicants who are coming in. Because quite often they're already chatting with us already about the enterprise zone or available properties. And this way, we're really able to kind of be that liaison to them as they come into the space down at the Airport Industrial Park. So that part is, is complete. We're feeling really good about it. On the annexation, we also were able to engage with Sarah Means and our Regional Solutions Team, who graciously offered their assistance as we think about the annexation, the potential for looking at a new zoning, how that might work. So we now have them at the table with us, which for folks who are listening, this is a, a free service, not a charge. But we are able to engage with experts from the Governor's Office, Department of State Lands, Army Corps of Engineers for Wetlands, all sorts of good stuff. So to have them at the table, I think is just a really excellent component to this. Lastly, a couple, a couple updates. I couldn't remember if I had shared, but maybe I think a, a thanks to Commissioner Malone, who suggested me to be a part of the COGS Economic Development District's Executive Committee. So I want to let you know that I'm, I'm representing Corvallis and Benton County in that group. Of course, the EDD is done through the COG. This is the group that oversees a, a multi-county area. They're in charge of the funding that comes through from the feds, from the Economic Development Agency. And we're working on a handful of items that are of regional importance. One item that's not specifically in our work plan, but we've been a part of, is a conversation around childcare. And elevating that as a priority for the region as it has, of course, social impacts. It has economic development impacts on our workforce. And I think, as you all know, the notion of a disproportionate amount of women who've been affected through the pandemic, who haven't been able to come back to work. And so our group is actively participating in that, not just through my work at the COG, but actually our team is a part of that group that's meeting and, and working to, to find some solutions. So that's exciting. Lastly, just some quick items of note for you guys. We have pulled together a meeting of our different economic development partners. It's actually this afternoon to talk about a joint application for the county's ARPA funding. You're notice a funding opportunity that just opened up. So we'll be looking at a combined application and talking with partners about how we can really work together to support our businesses coming out of COVID and meet the goals that you all have at the county for that, for that funding. Couple last items. I think, as you guys know, Heather Stevens has moved on. She got a fantastic job with Business Oregon, which is a step up in her career. We're super excited for her. We have interviewed a candidate here internally and are going to see if we can make something come to fruition, but we're looking to fill her position as soon as possible. I think what I've been telling folks though is, of course, we have such a small team here already that we sort of ask for and appreciate your grace as we look to navigate all that we do with a quarter less staff here in the meantime. So, so thank you for that. Gosh, I think those are really the biggies. Our, our economic, our Economic Development Consortium Group will be meeting again in April. And we're going to have some reporting out from, from the different work groups that have been getting together and, and working on items there. So that was a long-winded report, but I just want to really hit those highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions about our report. Or I also attach the most recent reports from our partner Pass Through Funding from Oregon RAIN and the Small Business Development Center.
Thank you, Kate. Questions for Kate? Commissioner Malone?
Good morning, Kate. Let's see, on the Downtown Association, I was curious if other organizations like that and other communities are having difficulties, or is this specific to Corvallis?
I, I think that's a great question, Commissioner Malone. I think, I think it is fair to say COVID, you know, one, even without COVID, downtown organizations are, you know, they, they can be a challenge to run and getting folks energized and, and you know, the funding for those has been shifting. I think COVID also had some negative impacts on different organizations. I will say I've been in close contact with Sherry Stewart from the Oregon Main Street Program and talking with her. Generally speaking, I think downtowns and their organizations are bouncing back. I think this item is specific to, to our organization and where they were at. But I, I don't think you can ignore the negative impacts that occurred because of COVID. You know, they're, they rely on planning a number and putting on a number of different events, right? That people attend as part of their fundraising strategy. And because of COVID, a lack of ability to put on those events. And I think, I think you see that same thing, whether it's a downtown association or a chamber, or folks who relied on that ability to do, do events as part of their fundraising strategy.
Okay. And my second question was on the downtown parking and glad that's moving forward for businesses to be able to access some public space adjacent to their businesses. And you said there's a temporary, the current program will, I guess it's already in place, but well, what's the, what does the calendar look like for this year? When will they, in theory, have to close up?
That's a great question, Commissioner Malone. I should double check the dates and I, you know, all, all props to Jerry Sordi on my team, who's been helping with this. I think the way we scheduled this was around really the warmer summer month. So as what's sticking out in my brain is April through October, but let me check on that and get back to you. I think what we found is most patrons enjoyed the space through the warmer weather months. And that when we got into the rainier shoulder seasons, it was just really challenging. And then businesses, you know, we had just a couple instances where folks were beginning to build more structural items, which is not allowed as part of the program. So the thought is to keep it, keep it in those warm weather months. So again, I believe April to October, but I'll, I'll get back to you with details on that.
And the ultimate goal is to coordinate with the city and perhaps have this be a permanent type program?
Yeah, I, I think that's right. I think we, from our perspective, we've heard from a handful of businesses who really liked it. You know, they liked it because their patrons liked it. We've heard that folks, many folks feel like it creates a sense of vitality and some, you know, you drive downtown and people are dining on the street and it just brings this energy. However, we do want to allow our council the opportunity to fully consider that and hear from folks. I do know of a couple businesses who are not restaurant businesses and were not fans. So you know, in all fairness, there's always two sides to every coin. That, and we need to figure out through this parking audit, I think there's going to be some discussions around parking, the cost of parking in downtown. And that will then translate to this program, because if we make it permanent, there's going to be this, okay, what are we charging businesses for this space, right? Because it is public right of way that we are letting them use. In full transparency, we've let folks use the space for free up until now, but that was because of COVID. And we wanted to create, you know, we're really just looking for any way to help businesses. But I think going forward, once COVID is done, the notion, Commissioner, is that we would charge for that space. And we need to be clear on what the value of those parking spaces is to make it equitable for everyone.
Well, I appreciate that update and like developing the guidelines as we go along to make sure it's fair for everybody. And I think, I, I like the idea of being able to charge for the space. And then a specific business has to figure out, well, do it, how much do I really need or want to, want to pay for? So that, I think it was appropriate as a, as a bridge to just allow it with no charge. And now things are hopefully getting back to some kind of normal and, and that, that makes perfect sense to have some cost associated with taking a public space. So looking forward to hearing, hearing next time how, how the details are working out.
Well, thank you.
Kate, I have a question for you. So we got an update from Suzanne Hoffman. She forwarded Paul Balata's update on some HOPE activities. And one activity on there talked about like miniature or micro urban renewal districts and the possibility of the council going to the voters to remove the vote, vote by, sorry, I'm losing my words today, but how you have to send it to the voters to pass an urban renewal. So can you share any details about that with us?
Yeah, I will. What I would say, I, you know, I think the super, super early days, I think as Paul is thinking about the challenges around creating housing in our community and looking at all the tools in the toolbox and things that we can use. I will say urban renewal is commonly a tool that can be used to do affordable housing down in South Corvallis. It's our second largest expenditure and a commitment that we made to the voters to do that. And folks like, gosh, up in Portland, they're committing at least a third of all urban renewal funds going to affordable housing in the different areas that they're doing. So it's super common. One of the constraints that Corvallis has is, as you indicated, in Corvallis, we have a requirement that urban renewal districts have to be voted on by the entire voting constituency. And that is rather atypical. There's only, I believe, four or five communities in Oregon that have that requirement. Normally, there's a very robust public outreach, a robust set of public hearings, which includes Planning Commission, the City Council, you know, an opportunity to hear from folks, but ultimately not a vote of the people. And I think what Paul's thinking is that if we were able to remove that constraint, we could look at doing some, some pretty creative things, such as a single lot urban renewal district. They did this up in Wilsonville. This was earlier, probably 10, 15 years ago, not so much related to affordable housing, but for economic development projects. And they were able to basically stand up these districts and respond to projects that were coming along. So that's sort of a general overview. And I think it's, it's something, it's an idea that Paul has, has just floated. And we wonder if, if it could be a solution to the affordable housing question. And basically opening up and creating a more flexibility in one of the main tools that, that cities and counties have at their disposal.
Thank you. Well, I think it sounds like a great idea. So if there's anything I can do to help, let me know.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Kate? All right. See, oh, Commissioner Malone?
Well, I was glad to see your busy chart there and how much effort is, is going into the airport project and trying to, I'm not sure if streamline is the right word, but make it easier for potential leases, I guess, to navigate the process. So do you anticipate, I see from the chart, sometime, it's later this year, thinking that you will have that wrapped up. Is that, is that the plan?
That is the plan. Yeah. My goal is that we have the annexation complete by the end of the calendar year this year. The reason it's going to take a little bit longer than I think we originally realized is, once we got into Corvallis's code, as, as you all know, I'm, I'm not a planner by trade. Jerry Sordi is, which, which helps us greatly. But in looking at Corvallis's code, there isn't really an existing zone that we think works down there quite for what we're aiming for. So we want to take a little time to just give some clear thought to what is it we're aiming for? How can we support the businesses, the technology coming out of the university and create a space for them to land? Are there types of businesses that we want to discourage? For example, I don't think call centers are Corvallis or Benton County's game, right? That's not a space that, that I think we should be playing in. So we want to take some time to really give some thought to that, set up the new zone. So, so it's a little more than just annexing the land, because then we'll have a, a new zone that'll go with it, most likely, that will apply to that area. But again, this is where I'm so excited about Regional Solutions Team. They helped our friends down in Coburg with a very similar project, in fact, an industrial zoned area right there at the off-ramp on I-5. And so they've had experience in this and have expressed a willingness to come, come hang out in a conference room with us and, and sort of really help us get through this work. But yes, end of the year is what we're aiming for.
Great. Thank you. I'm looking forward to making progress on that.
Us too. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Kate. We appreciate you coming and giving us an update today.
All right. Thanks so much. Nice to see you all.
Next up, we have the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District 2021 Annual Report. And I see we have Gary Stockoff with us and a couple other people. Welcome.
Welcome, Commissioners. I have very little to do with this, so I'm going to kick it over to Michael and he will run through the update for you all and I'll just stand down.
Well, great. Um, thank you, Gary. I will try to share, I wouldn't mind sharing my screen for a presentation if that's possible. Looks like I might have permission to do that. So does everybody see a cool picture of some people around trees with ivy on them? All right. Okay. Well, I'll kick it off then. So my name is Michael R. and I am new to the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District, or at least relatively so. So I figured I'd at least first start off by just kind of introducing myself to you all. I started at the Benton SWCD in April last year. And I previously had worked for the West Moulonoma Soil and Water Conservation District as a forester for 11 years. And before that, I worked actually at the Polk Soil and Water Conservation District for a couple of years. So when I worked there, I lived in Corvallis and I have a master's degree from the College of Forestry here at OSU and married a woman who grew up in Corvallis. So it was really fun for us to move back. So it's exciting to be kind of digging into issues around this place that my family loves so much. Previous to me starting at the district, Laura Brown was in this position for a couple of years. And she was the invasive species program manager, as well as the Willamette Mainstem Coordinator, which are the two of the hats I wear. But I also am in a bit more of a middle management kind of position where I supervise a couple of the staff here at the district as well, the conservation planner staff. So it's a little bit of a different position, but still really great to be here. And I wanted to maybe give just a little background on our invasive species program for a few minutes before I dug into the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the county. So I'll just do a few slides of kind of background stuff. So first, we got to move one thing out of my way here if I can. Okay, there we go. So our mission is to engage Benton County residents in the conservation and stewardship of natural resources for current and future generations. And as many of you I know are familiar with the district, what a lot of that goes into is actually working with folks that own or manage private lands around the county. And a lot of times we're working with farmers, sometimes we're working with woodland owners. We also do a lot of work with urban residents and we do all kinds of different things, but it's always voluntary conservation. We're not a regulatory organization and we're often given technical assistance for projects and sometimes even a little bit of financial assistance, which is really exciting. So when we, we're currently doing a revision of our strategic plan, which is exciting. We've got meetings this week and next week, pretty in-depth stuff all about it. And we're going to try to have something together by the end of June. But in 2015, when we did strategic planning, I identified the programs that are up on the screen right now. Those are communications, habitat restoration. We have an invasive species program. Many people I'm finding, and I guess I've always known this from my previous tents in Corvallis, know us for the native plant sale. We just finished a successful plant sale, I think just last week, I guess it was, selling a bunch of plants to folks to plant in their yards around their properties. And we also have soil quality, water quality and land management, the Willamette Mainstem Cooperative. And I'm going to do a couple of slides at the very end about that Willamette Mainstem as well. And then we have a youth education program. So I'll, I'll focus mostly on the invasive species program in this presentation. I just wanted to make a point that it's really not that it's just the program. It is a specific program at our organization, but invasive species is one of those topics that it seems like we're talking about them in almost every conversation we have out on the ground or working with a farmer or resident out there. I would say everyone at the district that works here, we're a staff of five right now and we'll hire a communications person again soon and be back up to six. We are all educated about invasive species. And so we're talking to people a lot about the ways they can manage things like blackberry and Scotch broom and all these different things. But where we get like a little more specific and intent, with intention, I guess, around invasive species is through our invasive species program. And part of that is my coordination of the cooperative weed management area for Benton County, or what you'll often hear referred to as just the Benton CWMA for short. And that's a nice partnership of a lot of different organizations, including all of our watershed councils, Corvallis Parks and Recreation Districts, always at every meeting that we have, the Forest Service assessment employees that attend, Green Belt Land Trust, Benton County Public Works is there, then a lot of our state agencies, as you can see on this list, like ODFW and ODF. And then Starker Forests had a representative at our last meeting, which is really great. They've been part of this in the past. And a lot of different private landowners. Whenever you flash a few partners up on the screen, there's always that risk of, you know, you leave so many out. You know, I don't have OSU on here. I don't have the Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal folks and that kind of thing, or the select tribe. But there's just a lot of people that come to these meetings. And we try to gather the partnership together in person or more recently on Zoom meetings twice a year. And when we get together, we try to talk about different projects we're managing, different ways we can partner on bigger projects. We often have guest speakers come in and do a little bit of training that's really relevant to all of the partners. We talk a lot about just how to prioritize different weeds. And my next slide is a little bit about that. But there's just a lot of ways to kind of decide what you really want to focus limited resources on. We've had some talk of trying to get the partners out as a field trip, maybe in June, to kind of look at some sites together where we can kick ideas around. And that's separate from my second bullet point on this slide, which is having a volunteer event that we call the Let's Pull Together, which is usually the third week of May, which is the Invasive Species Awareness Week in Oregon. The partnership really is fruitful at times. We can work together to come up with grant ideas. And we're just finished in December, an Oblong Spurge Grant, which is a specific high priority weed. And hopefully later this week, we'll find out if we got funding for a second phase of that work. And I've got a slide on that project in here too. So just a little bit about weed prioritization before I hop into the little bit more specifics of our intergovernmental agreement is in Oregon, we have the Oregon Department of Agriculture that is the keeper of the official noxious weed list for the state. And on that list, they have divided into a couple of parts with an A and a B list. And the A list is often new arrivals, very new weeds that we're just discovering in the area that we hope we can get aggressive with and then eradicate them. Also, sometimes on the A list might be just the real nasty ones, I guess, that are just particularly problematic or maybe even have public health concerns with them. And so as you can see on that picture on the left, there's a very tall plant that someone's trying to cut down and that's actually giant hogweed. And that one can get people a really, really bad rash if they touch it. So it's a, it's even a public health issue to try to get people to, to get rid of that one. And then on the right side, you see a big patch of knotweed on the Lucky Mute River, or it could be from the Little Lucky Mute. But the CWMA locally in Benton County will work to have a prioritized list that's very specific to our geography. So a lot of times there's A-list species from the state list on there, but there might also be some B-list species that we're choosing to just put a lot of focus on. And knotweed's one that we really do. The Mary's River Watershed Council and Lucky Mute Watershed Council really deserve all the credit for doing great work on knotweed. But we all in Benton County certainly benefit from it. And for one thing I've noticed is canoeing through the Willamette River a few times now recently is I don't see much knotweed on the Willamette River really at all, which is awesome. And I think it's thanks in large part to all the good work happening in the tributaries. So it's a great model of cooperation, which is really great. So now specifically, and this is really why I'm here today, is to talk more about this intergovernmental agreement that we have with the county and to kind of report out on that. The purpose of it is just for the district and the Benton County Public Works to work cooperatively and efficiently together to share information and do a little bit of education and cover the county while with a lot of this outreach. And when I started working at Benton SWCD, I thought that this partnership sounded really exciting because I've been in other counties where sometimes the district doesn't have that tight of a relationship with the county itself or with some of their staff or some of their departments. And so seeing that we had a line of communication with the roads crew specifically was really, really cool to me because those are folks that are just out there all around the county and might see some really important things that they can, can tell us about. So part of this thing is that the county pays the conservation district $5,000 per year to offer these services or this collaboration. And specifically the nuts and bolts of it that we try to do, if you kind of look at the task list in the IGA, is we do weed spotters trainings with the road crew. We try to do six of those a year. And I'll talk about each of these in a little bit more detail on the following slides. We also try to work together two times per year on a volunteer event that's usually focused on a special management area. We distribute educational resources to county employees and the public. And then we have an annual report, which you'll find in your packet for today's meeting. That's a two pager of just some cool color photos and a little bit of information on what we did in the last year. And then we have this annual presentation that's happening right now to the, to the commissioners. So, so far since I started, we were just getting back on track to doing in-person meetings with the roads crew again. We had been doing some things online or even just sending detailed emails out with flyers and information. So on June 29th, we actually kind of got back in the building and met together in person. And I gave an introductory presentation introducing myself and just kind of talking about the general way that we prioritize weeds in the county, just so that I could sort of build off that base to say, so, so here's why I'll come in here sometimes talking to you about some specific weed and why it's really a priority to us when there's literally hundreds of them out there that we could be talking about. And then I want to try to make the topics seasonally significant where this is something you might see right now or something you need to be looking for next month, or here's something you could be controlling right now. So as we fell into the fall and going into the winter, covering invasive shrubs and then invasive trees made a lot of sense. So we talked a lot about things like Scotch broom, holly, hawthorn, spurge laurel, things like that in those couple of meetings. And then just last week, I was there to talk about Oblong Spurge, which is that and yellow floating heart, which is an aquatic weed out on the Willamette River in a few locations are really the two highest priority weeds that I feel like I spend a lot of time on personally as part of the CWMA and part of the conservation district. So Oblong Spurge isn't really blooming right now, but soon it will be. So I wanted to start kind of getting some ideas in the, in the people's head there at the meeting to kind of be looking for it. And just kind of for fun, I threw this map in here just this morning, but Oblong Spurge is a yellow flowering plant, as you can kind of see in this picture on this slide. It looks like a lot of other euphorbia species, but we started finding it around Western Boulevard and then over like on 53rd and the Fairgrounds kind of area. And then through outreach over just the last couple of years, we've had a couple of positive IDs in Philomath. We've found it in other places. This is around Arnold Park. This is around Porter Park. This is the Unitarian Church on Circle, Winter Creek Drive, kind of behind Corvallis High, or excuse me, Crescent Valley High School, Vineyard Mountain, Silver Springs Road, as it turns into Soap Creek, pretty close to the McDonald's on Forest. So we started doing a lot of outreach and getting a lot of, finding that there's a lot of folks that have actually planted this Oblong Spurge in the past. And we want to try to educate them about that and talk to them about control of it. What concerns me the most, I'm going on a little bit of a tangent here, but just up on Vineyard Mountain and these areas, there's a lot of oak woodlands and that kind of more valued, I guess, habitat in a sense that fits our strategic priorities. And so starting to find it out there is a little bit troublesome. And that's one reason why we're really putting our shoulder into tackling this one, I guess. So moving into the weed pulling kind of work that we do in some of these special management areas, this is our right of way near Loop and Meadows, which the Green Belt Land Trust owns and manages. It's out near Northwest West Hills Road, kind of going towards Philomath. And we've been doing for a long time volunteer events there where we really want to dig up meadow knatweed or pull it, knapweed, excuse me, I might have said that wrong, rather than spraying it because the special management areas are tied to the county's HCP or Habitat Conservation Plan, which I'm sure you're all pretty well-versed in. But if we start to use herbicides, we have some concern that maybe we could have a little bit of a negative effect on some of these endangered plants nearby. So hand pulling or digging is really a great way to go. The last couple of years, this has been a little tougher event to pull off because of COVID restrictions, but we still got three people out there working on it last year and took a dozen very, very heavy bags of knapweed and their roots off to the landfill afterwards, which is exciting. And this year we've got a class from OSU ready to help us out on April 15th. And I've already kind of got the event organized to get out there and dig some more of this. So that's a pretty cool part of the project. And the county helps us by getting signs and flaggers if we need them for these sorts of events too. It's just really great. Related to that, knowing that we were having a little bit of a challenge to get volunteers out to some sites, I did try to do a few more things around the county, just sort of in, in areas where we had a little bit of, you know, I've got someone coming into my office here that might be a little bit distracting. So I'm just going to move to a little other spot.
Look at that. We've all gotten so good at pivoting. We're all just pros by now.
Well, and I probably could have easily stayed where I was, but just so that I don't distract my coworker. But yeah, so Oregon State University has this Geography 300 class that often needs to volunteer for class credits. So I started taking advantage of those folks. We've been up to Tekeena Landing, which is in the photo, to cut ivy off of trees on a couple of different occasions. And also recently got them connected with the Adopt a Park Program in Albany, at a North Albany or so Benton County location called East Thornton Lake Natural Area, where they did some oak restoration kind of work the other day, basically removing blackberry that was overtopping some oak plantings, which is really cool. So that's another little thing that we work on. We try to be opportunistic about that. Then education resources, we're always generating these for several different reasons and several different uses. But part of our agreement with you all and the county is to try to make sure we get these in the hands of the employees and also, you know, the public. So one of our pride enjoys is this water weeds guide because we do have a lot of canoe enthusiasts in the area that we hope can be keeping a lookout for certain things out on the river. And then one just kind of quick story that I think needs to pull out or point out is that after having presented to the county work crew, our roads crew twice, I got a call from them about a week later after my second one. And they said, hey, you might be really helpful if you'd come out to the Little Lucky Mute Watershed, where we have a property owner who has an owner maintained roadside, but is really struggling to keep up with it and has knapweed and knotweed growing there. And it's, it's kind of problematic for both drainage and for sightlines on the road. And I was able to go out with them and they did a great job talking about just the needs of the roads crew. But I was able to just kind of be the person to talk about sort of the ecology and the science of those plants. So when the landowner was talking about a certain strategy that they're trying to use to get rid of them, I was able to say, well, that doesn't really work that well, or you might want to try this and kind of be this non-biased, I guess, sort of resource to sort of play the middle and sort of help the conversation along as far as what's the management that could really, could, could work well in this area. And I thought that was kind of, was, and it was a nice little success of the partnership is to be able to go out there and do that. And I'm definitely available for those conversations in the future as well. And I was able to also get them connected with a biocontrol specialist from ODA, which was helpful to that landowner too. So just like my last few slides here, I just wanted to mention the Willamette Mainstem Cooperative as well. That's another program where we've been really successful with grant funding and doing a lot of monitoring with the USGS and some other partners. But a big piece of it was always doing these paddle and pole events and getting people out on canoes and just folks I think have a lot of fun with that, getting out in the canoes and doing some good for the environment. And that's really slowed down over the last couple of years. So we're hoping to bring those events back more this year and get people out on the river again and doing some weed pulls. This picture is Wapato, which is a really important cultural and ecological plant on the river. And I just think it's a great example to show why we try to get rid of some of these, these weeds that, that can really, could form monocultures on our, in the environment because then we can let Wapato and things like this grow really well. So here's just kind of a quick shot of a bunch of partners that help out with the Willamette Mainstem Cooperative. I think one of the unique things of this group is just that we really focus in on a smaller stretch of the river than looking at, you know, 60 miles of it or something. We really focus on the Albany to Corvallis area. But that said, I mean, we go down almost all the way to Monroe on some projects too. Or we, we put in at the Peoria Boat Ramp a lot. So we go a little bit south of Corvallis for sure. And just like you look at this map that was made a few years back, but this is just a result of a bunch of different partners reporting data on invasive species they've found on a big stretch of the river here. And all of these different colors, what they really are doesn't necessarily matter if you can't read. But these are all just different places where we saw, I guess, you'd say like resource concerns of some sort on the Willamette River. And so many of these have turned into projects that the Green Belt Land Trust or the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District or other watershed councils are working on. And it's just really exciting to see all this work happening because here at Benton SWCD, I've managed the invasive species program, this cooperative for the Willamette. And also now supervise a couple of staff. So I'm just one person with limited time, but I think that partnership with CWMA and partnerships like we have with you all, the Benton County Public Works and getting the word out is really how we make a lot of progress on all of these projects. So again, very thankful for the IGA with you all. And I think I have time to answer some questions if anybody has any.
All right. Thank you, Michael. All right. Thank you, Michael. Questions for Michael? Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, uh, Michael, I really, as a reef farmer and and having some land and and trying to keep on top of various weeds, I I really appreciate uh instead of just uh laundry list and potential problems to um have some prioritization to uh your efforts. That just um makes a lot of sense and uh makes uh um we're working on some of these kind of uh makes more sense to concentrate and see if uh uh various tech, what techniques work on which weeds and what time of year and and so I uh think you're on the right track there and really appreciate the training aspect of uh like you say, you're you're a small shop there and can can get to a limited number of um areas, but if you hook in the our public works folks or the Corvallis um parks, the people that are uh out every day and and get them educated to um um see, especially when something's fairly new to the area and hasn't got a a strong foothold, um uh a relatively small effort can have a um big impact. And uh I think the last thing is, I was glad to see the Emerald Ash Borer is not on the list and hasn't um got to our area yet. Any updates on uh that started in the east and is working its way west and we we have a fair amount of ash in our area that uh from what I understand is pretty vulnerable to the ash borer. Uh, any updates on how far away that is or what the what the prognosis is?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, um the closest it's gotten here so far is the Boulder, Colorado area, and it's also moved into the Dakotas a bit, I believe. Um, but uh so for one thing, the Oregon ash is our native ash tree in Oregon and it's a very valuable tree in riparian areas and flood plains, and it's very susceptible and through testing to the um Emerald Ash Borer, which is unfortunate, but not surprising. And then also ash is a very common street tree and um, you know, municipalities like Portland has a lot of ash trees growing on street, it's a street tree. So that's really a concern too, is just the urban forests and how they'll react to um the ash borer. But uh the Boulder, Colorado thing was kind of scary because it jumped a whole bunch of states and showed up in Boulder, Colorado. Um, and that must have just been through somebody transporting firewood or something like that. Um, so a lot of ecologists look at it like it's not if, but when, well, we have the ash borer here and when it comes, it's going to be damaging. So some ecologist wants to stop planting ash trees now because they feel like you're just going to invest in that and then it's going to be eaten by the ash borer. But then a lot of ecologists disagree with that and they say, well, it's just a great tree and has a pretty unique niche. And so I think we need to keep planting it. Um, and so that's like kind of a fun debate that people can get into, but um well, I I credit Oregon Department of Forestry and several other state partners for coming up with a risk management plan for Emerald Ash Borer, going back probably like four years ago to really start to prepare for how we'll deal with it when it comes and also training a lot of people on how to identify signs that the Emerald Ash Borer might be here, such as like the exit holes that you would see in a sick tree and things like that.
Great. Appreciate that update and and I I was gonna uh suggest the uh training on what it looks like, even even if it it's not here currently, just being able to, because it's a fairly distinctive uh pattern if if you know what to look for. So.
Yeah, that's a good idea to maybe sponsor some trainings on that. The Oregon Pest Detector Program has a lot of really great things and we could kind of help get that here um happening more in the in the local area.
Great. Thanks for the update, Michael.
You bet.
Commissioner Ogierow?
Futurewise, um, Michael, lots of pleasure to meet you virtually. Um, and a question for you, uh, you know, as you mentioned, with respect to the Oblong Spurge, that was initially a landscape plant that was brought in and people put it in their gardens because it's got that bright green foliage. Um, the have you all at SWCD and with the Cooperative Weed Management Area worked much with landscapers or with any of the nurseries um on these topics? And um as a way to get the word out and minimize the spread of some of these weeds?
Yeah, so one nice thing when um a weed is high priority on the ODA, not just weed list like Oblong Spurge now is, is it actually becomes technically illegal for nurseries to sell it. So I think that we've done a decent job at this point of Oblong Spurge no longer being sold at nurseries. Everyone's got some story of how they saw it somewhere, maybe something snuck through, you know, but for the most part, it's been that's that's been taken care of, which is great. Um, but then uh the landscapers is a really key group to talk to about a lot of our weeds, including this one. Um, and Laura Brown, my predecessor, did a great job of that. She um a couple of those sites, including the one that's around Soap Creek and Sulphur Springs I showed on my map, that was a landscaper that that noted that one and told us about it. Actually, the Vineyard Mountain one also. Um, so they had seen outreach that Laura had put together with the help of Heath Kierstedt and, you know, several other partners and um and they ended up telling their clients like, hey, I think you've got this bad weed here we should look at. And so really my message to just landscapers or even the the Rhodes Crew in County Public Works is um never hesitate to call and let me know if you think you saw it because I'll run out and take a look for sure. Um, we have one right in Porter Park that was just a report from somebody and I went out there and and just jumped down there and pulled it out because it was just a couple of plants, but it was nice to have it on our radar.
Great. Thank you. More eyes, the better.
Yeah.
So I have a question. Uh, it looks like you are doing lots of work and lots of programs and that's awesome. Um, I just have a clarifying question about the $5,000 uh comes from Benton County. So does that just get mixed into your budget or does that money go specifically for specific items like our, I see the road crew program? Like what does that $5,000 get used for?
You know, it does go into um our general fund, I believe, and then ends up helping pay for some of the salary of the staff, basically, is where that lands. And then um what we tried to do to get work done on the ground um for like the invasive species in Willamette Mainstem Cooperative is Oregon State Weed Board grants. And so one really cool thing that you all have done for us funding wise actually is Laura Brown went through this process with you all too to get us designated as the county's weed entity, which makes us extra competitive for Oregon State Weed Board grants. I believe the commissioner's signed a letter for that, you know, um so that we could have that designation. So it makes us more competitive to get state weed board grants, which are really helpful because those funds can help pay for staff time as well as on the ground contractor work or um supplies and materials and things like that that we need. And so um when you have a really high priority weed, you have um you get you get the attention of the state weed board pretty well, which is nice if you're trying to attack one of those um, uh, I guess attack, not probably the best term to use, uh, but treat the um A-list weeds.
Then this might be a question for our staff, but I think I read that that $5,000 comes out of our road fund. Is that correct? Okay, I see Gary Stockoff nodding. And am I, do I, is that the money that is in the road fund, is that primarily from motor fuel tax? Am I remembering that correctly? Okay.
Yeah, it would be. If it's within the right of way, then we can use the gas tax for that money, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to get it, keep it all straight in my head. All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Malone?
Uh, Michael, it's okay to use the word attack on some of these weeds. I think of blackberry or Scotch broom and you better uh they're well-established, you better hit them pretty hard. Um, uh, you didn't um mention the Confluence Building and uh is there a timetable for um moving in? I I was on the um Conservation District Board when that project got started and I've been uh following it. Um
Yeah.
Since then.
Yeah, yeah. So um I think that the concept of the Confluence Building is really exciting and it was one of the draws to this position in a way because it'd be so great to be working close with Green Belt Land Trust, Corvallis Environmental Center and other organizations. It's definitely a project that's experienced time delays, you know, with um chat um supply chain issues and you know, costs changing. So it's definitely at least it's over a year out, I think, from people moving in. But um for really good details on that, I always just just checking in with um Jessica McDonald at Green Belt Land Trust seems to really be heading up a lot of it as far as the contact for Confluence partners and then Holly Cross. And of course, the executive director here has more details on that, but um we're we're tracking it and I'm excited for it when it happens.
Oh, it's a great, great idea and um nice to see it coming, I mean, close to fruition. So.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Michael. I learned a lot. I didn't even know what Oblong Spurge was, so.
Better, better keep a lookout.
I will, for sure. Well, thank you very much for coming today and for presenting that information.
Yep, thanks. Nice to meet everybody.
Have a good afternoon. And with that, uh, we will take a short break. So we will come back at 10:05 with item 3.3. I thought I saw Commissioner Malone pop on. Oh, Pat, are you talking? You're muted.
Uh, in the packet, it says, uh, we're supposed to make a motion to approve the Conservation District annual report.
Oh, we, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Uh, would you like to make a motion?
Well, if we're started back up, I certainly will.
We are back from break and ready to roll.
I'll um make a motion to I'll um, make a motion to accept the Bitter Soil and Water Conservation District 2021 annual report.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so now hopefully we are ready to move on to item 3.3. Uh, Discuss Sustainable Materials Management Grant Initiative. And it looks like Daniel Reddick and Greg Verrett. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, I'll um, let Daniel take the lead on this as he's been working this grant program. With this revitalization, uh, rejuvenation, renewal of this grant program that's been on hiatus for a number of years, uh, 12, 13 years, um, and working with, he's been working with um, Rick Craig or another staff at Finance, so um, we're wanting to bring this up for conversation with you folks and get any input you have. So Daniel, I'll let you take it away.
Thanks, Greg, and thank you Commissioners for your time today. As Greg mentioned, we formally had a grant program um, through the Solid Waste Program that was dedicated towards waste prevention, waste uh, recycling or recovery. And that was funded through the landfill hoster charge until about 2007. So since 2007, we haven't had a grant initiative like this, so we are hoping to revive pretty much the same structure of the former grant program. Um, but the proposed Sustainable Materials Grant Initiative would be funded through community development through the Solid Waste Program budget. We have a biennial budget of $30,000 dedicated towards uh, waste prevention initiatives that are yet to be developed. And we're proposing using $20,000 of that biennial budget to use towards this grant initiative, and this would be dedicated towards community uh, projects that are oriented around uh, sustainable materials management, solid waste prevention, uh, material reuse and waste recovery or recycling uh, initiatives. So um, we're really hoping to um, get some feedback from the board about um, what you're thinking about uh, this proposed grant uh, initiative and I'm happy to answer some more detailed questions about it. The, to go over it in brief, the process would look something like um, grant applicants would file an application to community development. That um, qualified applicants would also be directed towards uh, SWAC, where SWAC members or Solid Waste Advisory Council members would review the application and um, provide feedback uh, based on a set of criteria uh, that are uh, kind of predetermined in this application process. And then uh, staff would use that SWAC feedback and also evaluate those applicants based on a, a set of specific criteria. And then uh, grant recipients would receive a maximum of $5,000 um, each um, out of this uh, total $20,000 of uh, grant funding. And on the attached uh, request for applications, we went into a little bit more detail. Again, it was based on the previous uh, uh, grant initiative, uh, but includes the timeline of important dates, so it gives you a sense of kind of what we're proposing in terms of how the timeline might work out. But in this case, um, we're hoping to have um, the SWAC meeting on April 27th to be kind of the first uh, SWAC review of grant applications um, coming in. And then uh, funds to be uh, available for distribution by May 31st. So that's about it for a kind of a high level overview of the um, proposed grant initiative. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Ojero.
Thank you for um, the opportunity to ask questions. I have a couple. One, is this envisioned as being an annual opportunity moving forward?
Yeah, good question. Uh, Grant, or Greg, if you want to uh, answer that, you can.
Sure. Yeah, we're hoping that this uh, will prove successful and will be something that we can continue into the future. Um, initially, uh, we were anticipating uh, two years of this budget, this, this biennium, essentially doing two cycles of the grant, but we we didn't get things in place in time to do that, so we're looking at probably one grant cycle for this biennium and then through the budget process for the next biennium, evaluate the success of the program and likely propose uh, an annual grant uh, cycle going forward into the next biennium.
And the other question I have is um, it's a small sum, um, and so I, I'm wondering in terms of and, and the criteria are heavy, um, sustainability of the project and actually having a significant impact, et cetera. How realistic is it that um, a proposal, a project can meet those criteria with that small sum of money? I can see us being leverage or match funds, but not much else. Have you talked to many people in the community that might have projects to see whether this is a realistic um, offering?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. I've been working with some uh, community members who have been working on developing projects and that's really um, part of the kind of uh, interest in, in rejuvenating this grant initiative. And it sounds like this uh, kind of proposed maximum of $5,000 per project could definitely meet the needs of community projects. Obviously, I think a scale is an important factor here. So some projects uh, might need uh, additional funding beyond um, what they would be receiving from this grant. So far, I've also looked through some of the previous grant recipients. Obviously, that was 15 or more years ago at this point, so there might be some um, kind of differences in how far uh, money from grants go. But grant, grant recipients uh, seem to kind of vary between $5,000 and $10,000 awards for certain projects. I, I believe this might be a good opportunity to kind of learn from, from the sort of requests that come in. Um, and that might be a good way to see if that number needs to be revised in the future. So that's one, one thought I had, but definitely a really great point. So far, it seems like that $5,000 might work for some of the projects that I've heard about, but we haven't, haven't had a lot of community feedback on that yet.
Learn as we go. And the other question I had, and then I'll yield the floor, is um, given the new grant um, uh, proposal platform that Finance has just adopted and that we're using for ARPA, was there any discussion of using that same platform for, for this proposal process rather than um, doing it just um, through your inbox and then you having to do the work of distributing uh, proposals to reviewers, et cetera?
Not specifically yet. Um, the conversations that I've had with the finance team about this project are still kind of in the um, research phase of how uh, that uh, project would actually be uh, or funds would actually be distributed and kind of organized from Finance's perspective. The, the feedback that I've gotten so far is that it seems like it would work well, but I haven't had met much detail in terms of following um, other finance procedures with regard to the grant. I think that would be a, a good question to bring up uh, in our next conversations.
Joe?
Good morning, Danielle and Greg. Thanks for joining us this morning. Danielle, I was just going to underscore, I think, the value of utilizing the tool that Finance is using for our ARPA requests. And it's a tool that I've seen a demonstration of, and I do think it's extremely valuable to be able to accept applications online, and so I would ask that you do uh, invest a little bit more time uh, in reviewing the opportunity to use that tool and see if we can leverage that tool for this purpose.
Thank you.
Commissioner Malone, I saw your hand.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, just a housekeeping, uh, on page 42 of our packet, it says a tool of approximately $10,000 is available, and I assume uh, that that was when it was each year of the biennium, and uh, so that should be uh, changed to 20,000, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, I caught that uh, as I was reviewing that this morning, that um, should be updated to 20,000. For, since we'd only be doing it once this biennium.
Okay, and uh, it's, the other is just a comment, I'm uh, I think this is a really good time to uh, bring back this uh, program. I, I just have the impression that uh, our recycling efforts are haven't recovered from several years ago when China stopped accepting our um, commingled uh, waste, and so I think small-scale projects and trying to figure out how to uh, uh, keep uh, materials out of the landfill at this point is uh, a wonderful idea and like has been said, you may have to fine tune the uh, um, project or raise the dollar amount that's available, but that's the main thing is to get this started and, and see, see what our creative folks out there can uh, come up with, so I'm I'm glad to see this uh, this proposal.
And Daniel and Greg, um, my question is just what do you need from us? I see the staff recommendation is uh, to support the proposed Sustainable Materials Management Grant Initiative, but that we do not have any motions, so are you just looking for, you know, the thumbs up or?
Yeah, I think you understand, Greg might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, questions and comments are, are very valuable and then uh, eventually, uh, soon, your help in spreading the word, um, or ideas about how to help spread the word would be great.
Uh, and Commissioner Ojero, I saw your hand.
Uh, yeah, just one more question in terms of um, the name of the, the offering, Sustainable Materials Management Grant. I know that SWAC worked really diligently to put together a strategy for the focus on sustainable materials management and not just recycling per se, thinking about life cycle of products and one thing and another. Do, did, uh, figure out how to ask this question, did SWAC come out with kind of a, a prioritization document or some sort of a summary or philosophy about where, where you all are going as a solid waste management program and um, how that fits with the state's new uh, producer responsibility and materials management emphasis that you queue?
Yeah, um, so there's a couple um, kind of outcomes from some of the discussions that SWAC had last year. There was a group of community members that had uh, gotten together and, and put together kind of a recommendation for SWAC, a set of strategies that they believed um, would be uh, worthwhile uh, to pursue in the county for sustainable materials management, not just focusing on the end-of-life uh, waste recovery or recycling. Um, and SWAC took that recommendation and essentially voted to prioritize uh, Green Business Certification Initiative, um, which was one of the kind of grouping of recommendations that the community group had made. So that is definitely um, something that um, staff is kind of continually gonna be keeping at the forefront and we're working on a uh, Green Business Certification Initiative as well. That would be sort of outside of this grant uh, initiative concept, although uh, certainly, you know, potentially supporting uh, businesses uh, would, would be included in, in that as, as well. But, so I think overall this kind of mirrors a lot of the feedback that we had gotten through that process from SWAC, uh, but not specifically addressing the green business initiative that they had voted on to prioritize.
Thank you. Just wanted to know where it fits into the bigger picture. Um, I think it's a good, um, this program's a great idea. There's a lot of interest in the community in this topic. It's worth supporting the diversity of efforts, uh, because we don't know exactly what will work. And uh, I also think that it's a, a, something that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee will, will welcome and, and give them a sense of ability to being more engaged, which is always a good thing.
All right, well, you got a thumbs up from me and from Commissioner Malone, and we have a thumbs up from Commissioner Ojero. Yes, we do. All right. Two thumbs up from Commissioner Malone.
Thank you very much for your input, comments, suggestions and support.
Thank you for coming, thank you for coming today and Danielle, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you so much.
All right, you have a good day.
You too.
And next, we will move to our COVID Department Operations Center update with Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Welcome.
Good morning. Uh, I know this isn't uh, our normal update uh, time, but the way that things are moving pretty quickly and lots of new information coming out, questions. We thought we would visit with you today. There's a lot that we still don't know, but um, April will share with you what she knows so far and um, if there are any questions you have that we can answer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Thanks, Suzanne. Yeah, I have a, a pretty brief update uh, for you today. Just wanted to keep everyone up to date on where we are in terms of our trajectory as we continue to come down from the search, as well as um, various conversations that are, that are happening around. So uh, first to, to the data, um, our, our, while our, while our case numbers, you know, remain high relative to what we used to consider high, cases have reduced quite a lot. Uh, for the week of, of the 13th of February, we had 233 cases. It's down from 574 uh, in the week before. That was a 60% reduction uh, week over week and about 75% uh, uh, reduction over a two-week period in reported cases. I don't have final numbers on positivity rates yet, as, as with the holiday Monday, uh, those things lagged just a little bit. But looking at the numbers, it looks like that positivity rate um, should be a bit lower than, than the, the last week as well. In terms of hospitalizations, um, when I came to you last Tuesday, there were 865 uh, people hospitalized and the most current uh, numbers I have are from Friday, but there were 741 people hospitalized across Oregon and Friday, on Friday and uh, with COVID-19 and uh, locally, uh, yesterday, there were 19 individual, individuals hospitalized at our, at our Good Samaritan, our regional medical center. That's a, that's a pretty average number for the, the last uh, little uh, bit of time last week or so. So um, you know, we are, we are moving toward a period of lower transmission and, and you know, I think we're also entering in our somewhat, you know, partway in a, a window where um, many fewer people will be vulnerable for, for some period of time and, you know, either from vaccination or from recent infection. We're, we're unsure, you know, how long this window will be uh, open, given that we aren't quite sure of the duration of, of the duration of uh, infection-derived immunity. However, you know, uh, you know, we, we are looking forward to enjoying a period of lower transmission. Hopefully, an extended one. There are lots of conversations happening, you know, with, with, between OHA and, and uh, health administrators with um, Department of Education uh, pertaining to, to uh, K through 12 schools and, and beyond and, and um, OHA is keeping us informed um, as they consider further guidance and I think, you know, uh, speaking of beyond, you know, this, we, we may hear, uh, we've heard rumblings of some changes in guidance from CDC. we've heard rumblings of some changes in guidance from CDC that may come later this week as well. So we're looking at changes from CDC, from OHA, from ODE, perhaps this week. So we'll continue to take in and synthesize and also provide feedback. And, and, you know, a challenge where where we deem it necessary to ensure that we are all on the best path forward. So overall, you know, if, if, you know, I'm part of why I want to provide these updates to you is as as the Board of Health, you'll, you'll come to a decision on whether to extend or or discontinue the local indoor masking order. And I understand that it's not a straightforward decision, perhaps. But I want to ensure that we have the the most up-to-date information in your hands as you continue to consider that. I, I, you may have heard that the most recent OHSU modeling is is projecting a bit earlier sort of attainment, attainment of the 400 goal in terms of statewide hospitalizations. Perhaps by the twentieth of March, we could get there. And I do think that OHA is likely to remove that indoor masking requirement as when they, when they get to that, when they get to that number. I did, looking at our case rates for this week in this reduction, I applied a similar, really conservative trajectory based on 25% and 30% reductions. We had a huge 60% reduction this last week. But if we, if we continue to go down just a 25% reduction week over week, we'd go under the moderate rate of transmission according to the current CDC guidance by the 27th of March. And if we got 30% reduction per week, we would reach it by the week of the 13th of March. So we are on a trajectory to to be in that, in that moderate transmission category by by those state frames. And then, you know, finally, you know, if the, if the local mandate does cease, we really want to ensure that we're communicating ways to keep our most vulnerable citizens safe, safer. We continue to ensure vaccination opportunities, access to protective masks. We have, our, our community health centers have received a large number of N95 and K95 masks, and we'll be distributing those. Knowledge about ventilation and ensuring adequate ventilation and then access to testing and to therapeutics that will help folks. So that's where we are for this week. I'm happy to take any, any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, appreciate the update, even though it's the fourth Tuesday. It's really great to, because things are, are moving. I guess my main concern is with a coordinated message that what our advice and recommendations fit with what's going on in in Oregon and hopefully with the CDC update that may come any, any day this week. But I heard a little yesterday from CDC and talking about, well, we're thinking about revising our mask update. Stay tuned. And then talking about that. This isn't their, their words, but it's, this may just be a pause. And so we may have to go back to indoor masking. And, and they managed to get that in a very short cut, which sound like type length. And I think that's important to, even in a shortcut, they talked about, this is, this is a pause. And we're not sure what's around the corner. And so it's definitely not, not over. And, and I think that's the message that the county comes out with. Hopefully, we'll dovetail with with other agencies' messages. But like I said, thanks for the, the update, especially when you bring this relatively good news. You can, you can come back anytime.
Commissioner Ojero?
Thank you, April and Suzanne. I think my biggest concern is that even if, if we are not in the best of positions, people are so ready to take off masks that I'm not sure how much people would listen unless there was another huge spike. It's, it's a tough time right now, just psychologically. So I think I'm in agreement with Commissioner Malone. It's all about our messaging and messaging clearly about risk and the fact that the risks are much lower if you're vaccinated and boosted and in a good place with good ventilation. But, you know, it, it's that whole layering of protections thing again. People need to be cognizant of where they are and who they're with. The concern that I've heard from people, you know, last week or so is, well, spring break and the fact that this is right at spring break and the time when there's going to be more mixing of people here. So I think that that needs to be a part of our messaging to, just to know who you're with, know their status, and take reasonable precautions, especially when people come back from spring break.
Any other questions or comments? Joe?
Thank you, Commissioner. April and Suzanne, my questions are more directly related to timing. I'm just looking at the board's calendar over the course of the next month. And we are slated to meet with the board on March 1st and then March 15th. It looks like that's the first and third business meetings, first and third Tuesday business meetings. And then we do have goal setting on March 8th. And so when you're thinking about timing and and information coming down from the state, is there a particular date by which you think you'll be talking with the board to make more of a formal decision as it relates to their position on masking? And also recognizing that we also need to focus our COVID Executive Committee on the impacts to our organization, whatever direction we go. So I realize you're talking about the community, and that is highly important and job number one. A job number two for me is to also look at the organization. And so can you comment on specific timing and board meetings? Also recognizing that I believe our emergency declaration expires on March 31st, if I remember correctly.
Thank you. As, as to the information that we can bring to the upcoming meetings, I think they'll all have something new. Likely, this week is anticipated to be a pretty large decision-making and announcement week in terms of, of CDC and perhaps OHA. So I'd, I'd share details if I have them. And I do think that some of it will be, require some ongoing adjustment. But the first and the 15th, perhaps the 8th, would actually also, you know, be prudent. I'm not sure, you know, I think a lot of it has to do with when the board is required, or sorry, is is ready to to make a decision. I think it, from what I'm hearing from the Commissioners, hearing what the CDC has to say in terms of national guidance, sounds like you'd like to hear from them first. And, and I appreciate that very much, actually. And, and that should come this week. And then perhaps, you know, the discussion could be had whether to just lift and align or to, to have a certain date in mind or to go on that same date as, as OHA.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ojero?
I do have one more question, and that is, Joe, we definitely need to double-check that date from our emergency expires. I think you're right, 31st. And is there any need for it any longer in terms of financial situation and everything else? So I'm hoping that we can, you can work advance to take a look at that and with Suzanne and April as we move forward. Then, of course, we have to, people have to know that if the situation becomes really risky once again, that mask mandates may return.
Any other questions or comments? Hi, Johan?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to echo what April's already said about wanting to make sure we're focusing on our most vulnerable population. So I mean, to compromise people who can't get the vaccine for whatever reason, that we are really thinking about what their needs are as we are making our decisions in the next few weeks. I've just been seeing a lot of people in the disability community talking about how they're afraid that they won't be able to go out at all. They already are limiting it. But with having a mask mandate removed, not going grocery shopping or doing other things they need to do, it makes it just a lot more harder to get those things done. I'd like us to be the leaders, be able to support whatever they're focusing on and their needs are. So as we make our decision to invite those voices in, so really seek out that information, and we're not making our decision based on a able-bodied or able perspective, but we're including everything that we can think of as we do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Johan, and thank you for reminding us of that perspective. All right. Any other comments or questions on this topic? Seeing none. Thank you so much, April and Suzanne. We appreciate you coming today and sharing the information with us. And that takes us to our information sharing. And it looks like I am up first. I don't have a lot to share today, other than my department tours are still in the works. I've had a opportunity to tour a few. I toured the Benton County Sheriff's Office last week, and that was a good experience. And I have public works coming up this week, so I'm looking forward to that. And Commissioner Malone, I will throw it over to you.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things. Daniel Reddick and Greg Verrett, I think that small-scale pilot and pilot projects is, is a very worthwhile effort. And glad to see that that is in the works to be revised and hopefully continue for the foreseeable future. See how creative our community can be. And I really think there's some things we can do and try that will really make a difference. Just our last topic on COVID and making sure our message fits. And I guess one image I have is, well, COVID's been a marathon. And we really don't want to declare victory at mile 21. It's kind of unknown how long this race is. But I would echo Joe, Johan's sentiments about, yeah, it's, maybe we're in pretty good shape for most people, but not, not everybody. If we get some good news from the CDC that lines up with what our state has proposed as far as removing masking mandates. But just, we've, we've been through a real tough couple of years. And it would not make any sense to not work hard to keep the advances that we've made. I think, I haven't heard too much about this year's flu season, but I assume it was pretty mild like the last one was. And that's a result of the COVID protocols that we were, were following. And I guess one, one thing I'd like to take away from COVID, assuming that drops back to a dull roar, is keeping some of the things we've learned, like going to work, going to the office when you're sick is, is is not heroic or a good idea, especially in wintertime when we're more vulnerable. And maybe handshaking isn't such a, figure out a different way to greet, greet each other and just some of the things that we've and maybe at times where wearing masks makes sense, depending on the what's going around in December, January. But I, I, like everybody else, is looking forward to springtime and being able to get around, kind of carefully get around a little bit more to events than we've been able to. And with your inspiration, Commissioner Wise, I set up a meeting with Community Development last Friday and had a nice, nice visit. And that's, and we had some good, good discussions about what they're doing and a little bit about the landfill situation. And so that was, that's a great idea. I think that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Ojero, updates?
Thank you. Well, it's only been a couple of weeks since we last updated one another our goal setting. So there hasn't been too much going on personally. I am on the Special Operations Team for Association of Oregon Counties with respect to legislation and the fast-moving short session, but that group has not convened yet. So I think so far, all of our Steering Committee recommendations for positions on bills have held and staff have felt need to come back and check in once again on legislative positions. So I think that is a good sign. I, in the upcoming week, I am going to, as are both of you, I believe, do a ride-along with Sergeant Dyberson. Looking forward to that. And I'm also volunteering at Orange State University with the College of Business in their pitch competition to help out their young aspiring businesspeople to put forth their business proposals that they develop over the course of a 10-week period. So I am looking forward to those community events, as well as a couple of others over the weekend. And was, let's see, so I think that's probably about it for me at this point in time. Nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner Ojero. Next up, we have Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy Tuesday. Thanks for giving me a few minutes here. I've got a couple of quick updates for you. Let's see, most of these are related to personnel and vacancies.
Let's see, most of these are related to personnel and vacancies. Number one, as you saw in my email to you earlier this week, we continue to recruit for APIO. So I know that we're actively out there pursuing that, fulfilling of that particular position. Also, I just wanted to give you a heads up that, as you know, over the course of the last year, our vacancies have certainly risen. And now we are having a challenge with the number of vacancies and being able to recruit for them. I encouraged Tracy Martino, our HR Director, to advance a limited-duration position for human resources that would help improve our capacity within the recruitment area. Tracy will be bringing that request forward to the Position Review Committee within the next week or two. And that is just strictly for added capacity to focus on recruitment for vacancies. I wanted to just share that with the board because that will not come to you because it's a limited-duration position. But if it gets approved by the Position Review Committee, I will certainly just confirm that for you as an FYI. But I do hope that we'll be advancing that request here over the next week or two. The Position Review Committee typically is scheduled to meet every Monday afternoon. And so hopefully Tracy will be able to get this on the agenda next Monday or the following Monday at the latest. Also, as it relates to positions specifically in the board's office, we continue to recruit for our administrative specialist that is also known as Teresa Farley. As you know, Teresa will be migrating to semi-retirement the first part of April. And we are actively continuing to recruit for her position. Last count, I think we had about 20 applications, which is actually a really good response in today's environment. And so we are going through a selection process, screening and selection process over the next two weeks. The goal is to have somebody onboard by March 21st. That's a tight timeframe, but if we're able to accomplish that, that will allow for crossover for Teresa and the new administrative specialist. Also, I've spoken to each one of you individually on this particular topic over the last couple of weeks. And it was, as you're aware, we are recruiting for a Justice Systems Improvement Program Communications Coordinator. And that position was originally approved as a limited-duration position in order to improve the candidate pool and the number of responses. I do believe that we need to advance that position by removing the limitation being the limited duration, which is a two-year duration. And I would like to lift that limited-duration designation on that position and turn it into a regular position. I do believe, based on our communication needs, that even after JACUP, we will continue to have a need for this particular position. And right now, we need to increase our ability to attract the best quality applicants possible. So I would ask that if you are so inclined that you make a motion on that topic today.
I would be happy to move that we shift the JACUP Communications position from limited duration to regular full-time employee.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, that assisted me with that formality so we can get HR to make sure that that is lifted. On that note, those are all of the updates I had for you today, other than a reminder of our meeting with the city managers at 1:00. I have confirmed that Mark Shepherd will be in attendance and Pat Hare. I have not received other confirmations back, but I anticipate Chris, as well as Steve Martinenko, will be here as well. I did encourage them in an email to try and bring their chief elected official. When we originally kicked these meetings off, it was intended for the chief elected official as well as the city manager. And throughout COVID, we have seen a reduction in attendance by the chief elected officials. So you might see a new face in attendance today. I'm not sure, but know that I was just encouraging that again.
All right, thank you, Joe. And then, so I see the order of the agenda says executive session and then other. And Joe, did you want to keep that order or did you want to go to other first with the?
Sure, I'd like to go to other first if we could, please.
All right. So, and the other that we have is to ratify the letter of appreciation to an anonymous donor via the Benton Community Foundation for the Oak Creek Route. And I've got the letter. Joe, did you want me to read the letter or was there a motion or what were, what would you like? Hope I can hear you.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Thank you. I think a motion is sufficient at this point.
I would move that we sign the letter to the donor that came to us through Benton Community Foundation for support of the Oak Creek evacuation route.
Commissioner, if you could amend your motion to just include the word ratify your signatures.
Okay, I move that we ratify our signatures on the letter of thanks to the donor for the Oak Creek evacuation route.
I'll pause, second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and now let's just take a five-minute break before executive session. We will come back at 10:58, 10:59, clock just changed. See you in a couple of minutes.